All right, I apologize. Let's go. Good evening, everyone. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, July 14th to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence for whatever your concerns are. Thank you. Alderman Miller, if you'd be kind enough to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Miller. Brian, city clerk, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll.
Done.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon. Miller.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Nine, present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. So, good evening again, everyone. As we begin the meeting of the city council, ask, again, welcome everyone in attendance and especially those folks who are on our respective electronic devices. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with all of your fellow Davenporters, whether it's here or abroad. We're happy you're participating in your civic city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport, Indiana a greater place to live for everyone. At this time, if you have a cellphone, especially in here, if you'd please put it on silent or turn it off simply so it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council, there's a podium there, the microphone's above you. Just please come to the podium. We'd ask you to state your name or ward. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address us as a body and not as any individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. All right, so first item, will an Alderman please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for June 23rd?
To move.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Spiegel, our city administrator, any updates for this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Second area, will an Alderman please move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for July 7th, 2021?
To move.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. And we have one proclamation this evening, National Parks and Recreation. I think Alderwoman Dickman will be good enough to read that proclamation, please.
If I can find the right button, yes, I'm honored to read this proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Davenport, Iowa, and whereas our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community as they improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural resource areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the city of Davenport recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, we, Mike Mattson, the mayor and the city council of Davenport, do hereby proclaim July 2021 as National Parks and Recreation Month in Davenport and encourage all residents to explore and appreciate the parks and recreation areas and our community has to offer dated this 14th day of July 2021. I move the proclamation. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. The motion passes, and we have Becca Niles to come accept. If you would please say a couple words.
Hi, I'm Becca Niles. I am the Community Outreach and Experience Manager for the Parks and Rec Department. I've been here for about four months, and this has always been a really big month for parks and recreation, so I appreciate that you guys are supporting that this has become a proclamation for a national month. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman and Ms. Niles. So, a tradition we've been doing at city council for many years, but then, as you know, something got in the way recently, called a pandemic. But we have been very proud of many of our athletic teams, academic teams, other teams, or groups of individuals in the past from our city who have excelled in various extracurricular activities. So I'm glad that we're starting this tradition again. I'm very happy that we're recognizing some of our youth in our community and our city that excel. And tonight, we're starting that off with the wonderful group of young ladies, the Assumption High School girls soccer team, state champions. So I'm going to come down there and coach if you'll meet me, and we'll, you know, hand out personally the little certificate of appreciation from the city of Davenport to you and the folks that are here, and then the ones that aren't, please give us or give them our appreciation also. So I'll meet you. We hope we have this in order, so coach first. Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations. So, Dawson Dorsey. Roger that. Congratulations. And Jared, do you want to take individual pick a group as we do it one at a time? Okay, one big group. Roger that. So just hang here. Okay. Jay Jackson. Roger that. Congratulations. Autumn Kelly. We're getting this in order. That's interesting. Two, thanks to Ms. Tiffany, of course. Annika Ekstrom. Oh, almost in order. All right, cool. Congratulations. Annika Kutila. Congratulations. Livia Holsbury. Congratulations. Head coach Elizabeth Moss. Congratulations. And assistant coach, Michael Herr. Congratulations. So let's give these wonderful people. Then we'll do her first and then, of course, your parents. Everybody look at their respective camera. If you guys need to move, we can pause a second. Very good? Very good? So again, congratulations. Let's give these wonderful people.
I'm Elizabeth Moss. I'm the head coach of the girls' soccer team, and it was definitely an exciting year for us to be back after, you know, the season was canceled the year before, so I know everybody was just excited and joyful to be out there, interacting with each other and definitely competing again. We had a lot of fun this season, and when we went to the state tournament, you know, it's always helpful when we have the support of our families and our city behind us. And, you know, we felt that the well wishes and good looks, the messages that we got, we appreciate that, and we appreciate everyone's support here, so thank you for the recognition.
Congratulations again, and there'll be no disrespect if you sit through, don't or do sit through the rest of the meeting. That's totally up to you. So we'll pause a second if you do want to make your exit. Appreciate that. Good luck next year and everything you do. So continuing on now, petitions and communications from council folks and myself. I'll go Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. I just want to announce to everyone and remind everyone that I will be having my July 5th ward meeting here in council chambers next Tuesday. That will be July 20th, and it'll be at 6:30, and we'll continue to do what we've been doing for the pandemic. We'll be live here in person, but then we also will have a streaming option if you have found that to be more convenient. And this month's topic is going to be Bruce Berger, our director of our community development team, our economic development team. And with everything that's happening between Amazon coming in, our ARPA money, and our COVID CWDG money, it's a great time to have Bruce come in and speak to us about the great things that are happening around Davenport. So I encourage everyone to show up. You don't have to be just a 5th Ward resident, but I really hope to see people from the 5th Ward. So I'll see you guys all Tuesday. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to let everyone know that there will be, the 3rd Ward meeting will be Monday, July 19th, in city council chambers at 6:30. We'll be talking about upcoming projects that the city will be undertaking, the big ones. Next year, we'll be talking about the ARPA funding. We're also, Becca Niles is going to join us from Parks and Rec. Becca's fairly new to Parks and Rec, but, you know, she'll be able to talk a little bit about kind of the programs that are coming up, exciting programs there. We're all glad to be able to be out and about again, I'm sure. So please join us for that, and again, if you're not in 3rd Ward, you're welcome to come anyway. I will have my phone number on the back door for those using the rear door handicapped accessibility. We keep that door locked, but my phone number will be there on my cell. You can just call me and I'll come and get the door unlocked for you. And then I also wanted to remind everybody, early warning to put in your dance card. Party in the Park, number two for 2021 is coming up at Garfield Park on Thursday, July 22nd. So that's not this Thursday, but next Thursday, we'll be there in Garfield Park. We'll be, you know, we have, all of the departments from the city will be there. There'll be food, there'll be music. I'll be there doing history, who built my park, who built my neighborhood, and, you know, other good organizations from around the city. So if, whether you live around Garfield Park or you just want to come, we welcome everybody to these. It's a great place to meet the people who live around that area and find out a little bit more about that great neighborhood park in that great neighborhood area. So I hope you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, first of all, want to thank Public Works and Clay. They put in new lights in chambers, and it's much brighter. It's better. I mean, we've got deep cans. It's still a challenge, but it's much, much better. So I wanted to pass that on and say thank you. I also want to thank Mallory Merritt and Corey Smith. I did my first onsite at the ward meeting at the Eastern Library as well as virtual, and it went very well, had a great turnout. The room worked great, and Mallory did a great presentation, and we had a very good give and take with folks. Yeah, it was fun. So I also want to thank, and we'll continue doing that, the 2nd Thursday, always at the Eastern Library unless the room isn't available. So it'll always be the 2nd Thursday at 6 o'clock. And third, a little bit more about COVID. I haven't said anything for a long time, and I know you're all relieved, but I did a little homework. There's a great website called covidactnow.org, and they have information for at the city, the county, the regional, and the state level, as well as US, on vaccinations and vulnerability, that kind of thing. So Iowa, at least 52% have had at least one dose. However, the Davenport metro area for Iowa and Illinois, the fully vaccinated is only at a little under 41%. So we now have the Delta variant, which the fewer people we have vaccinated, the more we have a chance to get that moving around. And a lot of younger people who have not been vaccinated in their 30s and 40s are starting to end up in the hospital, and all of that just breaks my heart. So Iowa is 28th in the nation in the percent vaccinated. We are really low. So I just wanted to pass that on, too, and you might want to just keep an eye on it. And there are places that are saying it's bad enough, we need to mask up and keep our distances again. So it's very important. So that's my COVID report. Thank you very much, Mayor, and I hand it back.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question for staff. We're 10 days out from the biggest party of the year in downtown Davenport. I can't help but notice that we have a lot of utility construction, water main issues that we're working through, and just pylons and gravel and impediments downtown. Will much of that be fixed by the BICs, and if it's not fixed, can we work with the people doing the work to make sure that the streets and sidewalks are safe and tidy before then?
Nicole Gleason, Public Works. Yeah, oddly enough, Brian Shetan, I just had that conversation yesterday, and he has been following up with utilities, reminding them that if work isn't going to be done, it at least needs to look nice and be secure ahead of that event. So we'll be sure to keep that communication going on through the next week. Yep.
I know 10 days, we're getting pretty tight on being able to pour the concrete and then have it set in time for pedestrians, but ideally, we would have that done. But if not, definitely, it needs to be safe for the tens of thousands of people who will be down there in 10 days.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. I agree. Every day I'm talking to her about that. So we all need to keep them on. Sorry. Alderman Miller.
We are 10 days out from the second biggest party in Davenport. That is the Ward 7 meeting, which will take place on September, in, on July 24th at 10:00 a.m. 10:00 a.m. on a Saturday. My eyes will be like the donuts we serve glazed. We will be talking a lot about some of the issues that are going on in Ward 7. And I mean, this is the most serious way. We have things that are pending that affect us, not the least of which issues were concerning fair housing, Rock Church, and, well, frankly, me not being the Alderman of Ward 7 in November. I am putting up an open call for anyone who might be wishing to run for Ward 7. Alderman, for the month of, for the election in November, please come to that meeting and have us meet you. I will not be then, there then, so I mean, I will be at the meeting, but I won't be hereafter in November. So please, I'm trying to give you an opportunity to come and talk to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Miller. The only thing I heard was donuts, so that'll probably be the key to getting people there.
Glazed.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, everyone. So we'll move on. I'm pausing. Alderman Jobchin, just checking. Okay, good. Okay, so we'll move on to individual items of discussion, individual items on the discussion agenda. So we have one this evening. It's a third consideration for an ordinance for case REZ 21-01, being the request of Dan Lorenzen on behalf of Rock Church Ministries to rezone Lot 2 of NIMs acres from SOS, Open Space District, to R1 Single Family Residential. Noting that Planning and Zoting Commission recommends denial, so there must be eight votes in the affirmative to pass. Is there any public with comment? Hearing and seeing none, and Alderman has moved. Is there a second? Second now. Is there any discussion from any of my Alderman folks? Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. There were some council questions last week that we needed answered from the petitioner. So Alderman Miller and I met with city staff and the petitioner, and I'd like to bring Laura up to kind of explain the conversation we have, the questions that were asked, and kind of where we stand right now. And then after she does that, I'll make a comment. But because we don't have a full council, one thing that the petitioner has asked for is, you know, please, please do the final vote with all 10 Aldermen, so I have a fair chance of getting eight votes. We will not have 10 Aldermen here this week, and we will not have 10 Aldermen here the following week. So I am going to ask to table this for one cycle and do the vote in two weeks. So Laura, please.
Laura Berkeley, Development and Planning. So the conversation that we had yesterday was focused on the outstanding item related to street access and how important that component was in order to be able to move any kind of development forward, and some ways to protect the city should that not come to fruition. So we have some suggestions on amendments to the ordinance effective language that we would suggest to help protect the city, although the petitioner is confident that that is something that can be remedied and put in place. So that was one item. The other was summarizing some of the concerns related to the open space and seeing if there was an appetite to add a condition into an ordinance to leave some land aside that would be untouched. So that is out there. I have asked the petitioner if he can check and see what would be appealing to him as a potential for a condition, if that's something that they're interested in. Also, last week, it was brought up on if there's a possibility in looking at any city-owned property that would be up for some kind of review at city level. So that is something that I am currently working on. He has said that he wouldn't mind us doing a quick look to see if there's something in the northern area of the city that would be compatible with what they're looking for.
Okay. I'm sure there will be questions and comments for you, so what I'll ask, Mayor, is if you'll let the discussion continue, and then at the end of the discussion, I'll make the motion to table for one cycle. Thank you.
Roger that. I'll come back to you at the end. Okay. For any other Alderwoman or Alderman folks, Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. One of the concerns I have with the idea of leaving some open space in that plot is in the agreement, it specifically says that Rock, quote, "Rock Church Ministries grants SCI full access to the drive for future development purposes." So even if we get the pastor to agree to leave some area open, the agreement itself for the easement provides, you know, specifically states that SCI, the owners of the other lot, would have full access for their own development. So we may end up just having a pocket park at the bottom of the hill with that. So that's a concern, so I don't see having, having that be a realistic issue as a resolution of this. And then the other thing, you know, as we all know, that he owns 11 properties, including two properties across the railroad tracks right there that is fully capable of supporting what he proposes to do, that has full access to Eastern and all the utilities. So all he'd have to do is combine the plots, and those are the, that's the map of his properties right there. You can see that they abut, and they're right on the other side of both the property at issue as well as the other side of the railroad tracks, and you can see that both lots have access to Eastern. So he already owns those, and there's nothing on them. They're not developed at this point. There's no structures. So that, and he has nine other lots within Davenport that he could consider using as well. But this one makes complete sense to me. And I guess the other question I have is, how much would it cost to develop the subject parcel with access, with utilities, with building, with parking, with detention ponds? Because going to his website, the church website, they only have about $170,000 in cash, and over three years, they would have, they have pledges for like $360,000. And so I'm not sure that they have the money at this point to do what they want to do on that lot, although with these other two lots, he may be able to because he doesn't have the concern with the access of the utilities. But even that with $350,000, $390,000 is not very much for a very large building. So I just wanted to raise those points, but particularly the first one. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick point of clarification. When we, if we table this, does that go back on a full committee, and we'd have to do the committee of the whole, and then on council? Or does it just automatically go to council?
No, right.
It's going to be for the full cycle, so it'll be a committee of the whole and a council meeting.
Two more weeks of discussion is what it would be. Thank you.
Alderman, Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Because this is open, you can sit down for now. Because this is open space, it does make the development process a little different in the sense that it is much more difficult to go from a building to, back to open space. You know, the demolition costs, I'm sure our city staff would love to talk to you about demolition costs that the city has to deal with because 30 years ago or whenever, entities got approved for development and then were either not managed or not planned or, you know, something went off the rails, and now we're dealing with abandoned properties. And so, especially with some of the concerns that Alderman Lee brought up, this is not a property that's necessary, I mean, we're literally hoping for it not to be redeveloped. So if we find ourselves in a situation where we have a vacant building, that could create a lot of problems for the surrounding area. And so in, you know, due diligence to that surrounding area, I think it would be best to have some pretty strict scrutiny if we're going to be bending the rules for this one. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderman Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is one of those cases where I can simultaneously see both sides of the argument so clearly and so succinctly, but the issue that keeps coming back to me is a matter of really just, you know, what fairness is. I think that one of the things that really concerned me the first time I met with the petitioners was that very thing that Alderwoman Lee brought up, the fact that perhaps the money was not, was not sufficient enough to actually have even begin to address the actual work that it's going to take to actually bring that project to fruition. But the reality is that when I talked to him, he, the petitioner, actually said, "Well, listen, what we don't have are designations of money. What we have are pledges of time." He talked about the fact that in the, in the, you know, in the church membership, they had a lot of people who would get excited about actually designating their, you know, construction abilities and designating their, you know, various expertise at actually building the place. Now, again, these aren't things that are easy to quantify. I mean, as a, as a, as a city council, we denote pledges of money as our ability to get a job done. So I, it's, I don't know, I, you know, what's fair? I mean, did he always have these intentions for this particular plot of land? Yeah, I think he did, and the evidence of that is the fact that, you know, he was able to show me these plans for this particular plot of land that date back years. The fact that he has plots of land in other parts of the city, you know, it illustrates that he's a, that he's a landowner, but not necessarily what his actual intentions were for this particular plot of land. So these are, you know, these are things that I, that I've been wrestling with over the last month or so. What does it mean to have a, the nature of open space versus the nature of owning a property that gets designated to the open space that you have plans for? These are, these are difficult questions, and our attempts to try to solve this problem by imbuing a sense of money as a way to designate a pledge, I think it's not necessarily approaching perhaps what his intentions are. That's just what has been going through my mind, anyway. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Miller. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, Alderman Miller brought up private property rights, and, you know, we all took a vow to uphold the Constitution, and private property rights and religious freedom are very important parts of our great Constitution. Not for the elected officials to be authoritarian, dictating to a landlord what he can do with his property and use another property and trading with the city. You know, I've been on the council for a while, and I've never heard those type of comments from elected officials. You know, staff is doing their job, and then it comes to the city councils to make the ultimate decision. But, you know, this is becoming more and more common with this council, and I'm really concerned.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else? Alderman Grip?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make the motion to table this agenda item for one cycle.
There's a table, a motion for a table, and there's a second. Brian, please call the rule for the tabling for one cycle.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. This item is tabled for one cycle, which, again, just to clarify, means that it'll come back next week at committee of the whole for discussion, and then go to council the week after that for a vote. All right. Thank you, everyone. The next item is, is there a motion for approval of all items on consent agenda? There's a motion and a second. Brian, please call the rule for all items on consent.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. All items on consent passed. The next item is, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for the evening. Next item, is there any public with business? So if you have something that you'd like to discuss other than what's been on the agenda, please step to the podium. Please give your name, ward, or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kelly Cruz. I live in Rock Island's First Ward. I've recently become aware of something that's going to be a huge issue in Davenport these coming weeks and months. Three really big apartment complexes have served notice to the people that live in them, that they have a very short amount of time to get out. And these folks are calling everywhere, and they cannot find housing in Scott County because there's so many of them being forced out of their homes at the same time. These places are in wards seven and eight. This is going to be a disaster. I've never been in a city government, and I can tell that it's going to be a disaster. We're going to have people that are going to have a hard time staying near where their, their work or their educational opportunity is. Some people have situations that make it so that they can't move just anywhere. You know, they might have pets, or, you know, need a certain type of, you know, accommodation for the kind of life that they live, and they didn't have any notice that this is going to happen. You know, this is going to be disruptive to people's work. It already is disruptive to people's work. At least two of these places have terrible landlords and management companies that didn't fix anything, and so people had to make appointments and stay home and wait for people to come and fix things that, I mean, they should be no-brainer things. I own a home, a very old home. I made that choice. I know that I'm going to have to stay home sometimes, because there's stuff falling off the roof, there's stuccos rotting and everything like that. I made that choice. If I had a landlord, I would not expect to have to put in a whole bunch of my time on top of the rent that I am paying that person to try to get things resolved, just so that I can live a decent life, while it won't be thrown out on the street in 30 days or 45 days. You know, just stick a letter in your mailbox and bye, you're gone. So you're going to be hearing more about this, and, you know, try to put yourselves in their place, and make sure that everything that you can do as a city government gets done for these, these fine folks that have already put up with so much. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the mayor for, and Alderman Miller for taking our personal meeting. I'm a resident-
May I, if you could please give your name, address, and ward, and if you're not from here, please tell us where you're from.
My name is Sheila Parker Wilson, and my ward is the seventh. I live on 136 East 35th Street.
Thank you.
I'm here. I was appointed by the mayor, and also the residents of 35th Street. I want to thank the mayor for taking the meeting, and Alderman Joseph Miller. And the residents of 35th Street would also like to thank the mayor for the 30-day extension that you did get us. You did also reach out to the non-for-profits, which was Salvation Army, which has been working wonderfully with us as much as they can do. So today's request is, if we could still get assistance, because she's running into a rock and a hard place, trying to come up with the funds. Our other second concern is, which is really very important, is to set up a trust, because the people that bought our property, we have not physically seen them. We have not physically know who they are. They have no address. They have no working email. And so they have a portal that works, that can accept your payment, but now they have shut the portal down. And so now they physically want money orders or a check to be dropped in a drop box that's supposed to be yellow, but it's really gray, because I did the investigation, and I live on the premises. So therefore, we're trying to set up a trust. Saint Anthony Father Rudy is willing to get with his attorneys and financial advisors to intervene to try to set up a third-party trust, so we will not be paying our rent, because they're still expecting us to pay July and August. We have an extra 30 days. So I have to the 31st. Most people have to August 31st. And so with that being said, that's not enough time to relocate, and I don't have the financial means. Also on the agenda is, we're facing to Salvation Army, which was the non-for-profit the mayor reached out to personally. She gave me out a blank piece of paper with the breakdown of what the expenses that we need to transition. And at the bottom of this paper is relocate outside of Scott County. We are all Scott County residents, and we would like to stay part of Scott County. We are taxpayers. We're successful, and we would like to stay on that track. We were bought out of buildings that should have been condemned. And so therefore, we are not a charity case. We're just asking for a little assistance so we could transform from what just happened up under our nose. And so I'm calling out for just more knowledge, more assistance, and help us be still a resident of Scott County, because this is where the cess started us, and we would like to continue our cess right here in Scott County. I'm going to introduce Septima. She's going to have a little bit more details with some more knowledgeable information about the new owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Septima. I'm also from the seventh ward. I'm a resident of the 35th Street properties that is being, they had got bought out, and we will be displaced soon. When I first got my letter, you know, I kind of read it over. First of all, I know it's not legal. They didn't certify it. They just stuck it on our doors. So that was the first matter. Then I kind of just took some time to see who, who these people were. Who was coming into the city that I was born and raised in and buying property, you know, just to see who they were. When I ran across one of the guy's descriptions of our area, he said he came to a Class C community, which is 35th Street in Davenport. He saw the opportunity to, you know, do a whole complete makeover, renovate it, boost the rent, and attract a strong tenant base. That's kind of offensive. I'm trying to figure out, do I work every day? Am I a part of the, you know, the community? Like, what makes me not a strong tenant base? I have a, my last place before this one, I was there for seven years. Strong tenant base. The new community will be repositioned for a working-class millennial tenant. I'm 38, going to be 38. Probably everybody here 35 older. That is kind of offensive. Millennial tenant? So we're older, we can't live there? Do we have to be in, I just want to know where his angle was, and what that was supposed to mean, a millennial tenant. That's who he wants in his property. Some tactics he did was, I, my rent was paid. I still have a balance on my bookkeeping after, what's today, the 14th? So 14 days into after paying rent, it's like a bully tactic. I have to look at my account that says that I owe you money still. I've made many complaints about my tub leaking. I made my first complaint on the first of July. No one has responded. My tub doesn't drip. It leaks. It pours water out. I pay my water bill. So I'm just trying to figure out who allows these people to now address these issues. Before this owner, the last owner, actually had the same issues. This issue transferred from the last owner, and I still haven't had it resolved. So I just want to know who in the city allows these people to let these properties get to this condition, and then we have to suffer, because once they get to the point of almost getting condemned, we have to suffer as tenants. We have to suffer badly. We have mold, leaking tubs. I plug something up in my bedroom, everything upstairs goes off. My neighbors, one of her, one of the neighbors, because we've been doing a lot of meetings, and she turns on her microwave, is it? Her microwave goes off. We could die in our sleep. Let's be... ...opportunity to stop these horrible landlords from keeping these terrible properties that we have to live in. They just can let it get rent, 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 but never fix anything. And I feel like the city of Davenport should be held accountable for their inspections. Why is this property there, the Crestwood and the 35th Street property, at the point of condemnation, and nobody stepped in before? Nah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How you doing? My name is Jabari Goodwin. I've been here for about maybe 10 years, no, two years, from San Francisco Bay Area. My mom and my stepdad got me to come here because of a job opportunity. And to be honest with you, looking here and looking at the Bay Area, totally different than how the Bay Area used to be 15 years ago. So my mom and my stepdad finally got us to come out here, me and my wife and our four kids. We've been here ever since then. I'm a tech at Smart Honda. I went to school for automotive, finding my dream come true. I moved into, on 35th Street, been there ever since, for two years. It's been one problem after the next. Like she said, turn the water on in the bathroom, water drips down, leaked right down into the living room. Called, called the city, had them come out and inspect. Remind you, in between us calling the city, come out and inspect, my wife came down with pneumonia. On my way to Iowa City, my wife said that she was feeling shortness of breath. So I got everybody took, got everybody in at the hotel, got them all suited, took my daughter to go get her dental work done, come back. My wife was having shortness of breath even more. Had to take her down to the hospital. Comes down to it, she had a bacteria infection in her lungs. The doctor said it may be cause of mold. So now, we go back home. I call the city. They come out, inspect, and not, not even a week later, we got a notice on our door saying we had to vacate the premises, or relocate, because they want to remodel the apartments. Okay, well, we got to have a 30-day notice to relocate. You can just get us a hotel. Same thing happened to us in California two years ago. Owners, new owners bought property, we had to move again. Mind you, we had been there for 10 years. We don't move every year, every two years, every three years. We stay where we want to be at for a long period of time. And, you know, by me getting a job where I was comfortable, was be able to make money, to save money to buy a house. I can't do that now. I can't even think about where my five-year-old is going to go to school at come September, because we don't have a place to stay. We got to be out on July 31st. I don't have money like that to come up. And then in between all of this, I had bunion surgery on my feet. So I ain't been back to work in three months. Now, I don't have money like that to move. I'm pretty sure if you sit there and think, you'd be like, well, he's telling the truth. Well, it's the truth, you know? So where do I go from here? All I say, I am not asking for money. I'm just asking for help. You know, I'm just trying to figure out my point in, my point in life. And, you know, at 40 years old, I was planning on retiring at the age of 45. That's how much I love cars, that much. But I was 20 years behind, because I couldn't find a proper city and a proper job to do that by living in California. But I had the opportunity here, and I'm set back again. So all I'm asking for is just a little bit of help to make it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure. Bill Handel, Nashville, Tennessee, also Fourth Ward in Davenport, wanted to bring an item that I've talked about in the past, bring it up again, the issue about the $41 million that the city is going to be receiving from the federal government relating to COVID-19. I'd like to have the consideration of the city to add something that I had talked about in the past, the cost of which might be around $400,000, maybe 1% of what that is. And before you make your final decision about what is to be done about that, I'd like to raise this issue. Davenport's a city where a few things are definitely important: our family, our friends, the river, and our city's history. So let's go back a few moments to the founding of the city of Davenport. Antoine Leclerc, born 1797, died in 1861, French-Native dad. His mother, Native American.
Mr. Handel, I apologize. Hey, if you could take your conversation up. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Sorry, Mr. Handel.
Give me 10 seconds. Religion, Roman Catholic. He spoke three languages, English, Spanish, and French, also six Native American languages. And I didn't realize this till today, but it made, it ties into the squares that he donated to the city of Davenport. The first one, Bolivar Square, reflects his Spanish language. That's the George Washington of South America. Lafayette Square, which obviously his ancestors, it turned out his dad came across the Atlantic with Lafayette. So there is a very close tie, of course, Lafayette, pretty much the stepfather of America. And of course, his English side, which is Washington Square, and George Washington, the father of our country. I didn't know this, but he spoke the six native languages. And originally, our east-west streaks, from second to sixth, were named after Native American tribes, the languages he spoke. And those were Sac Fox, Ottawa, Chipewa, and Potawatomi. At some point, the English speakers in the city, I guess, decided it didn't quite sell as well, so they changed it to second through sixth. But anyway, but the three public squares, the one that was lost most recently was Lafayette, was Washington Square. That was originally the magnet, the hub of our German immigrants, starting from the 1850s on. We had a public market. We had beer gardens, Graceful Germania statue, atop a splendid fountain in the middle of it. We had a big X of sidewalks in the middle, because that whole area was full of buildings. If you wanted to cross to a shortcut, well, that public square was the place to do it. But, and that went along for many years, but all that came to a halt in 1917, when the U.S. entered World War I, and a wave of anti-German hysteria swept our country. My dad's, my great-grandparents were bilingual, but they couldn't speak English for fear of being thrown in jail in the city. My granddad spoke a little German, but he was just a kid. He was a rivet heater for the buildings going up. And he was pretty much, he did talk about what he called the Ku-Ku Clan, because they went against African-Americans. They also went against Catholics, like he was. And my dad, also German, fought in World War II at that- At that point, it wasn't a big deal to have Germans fight, fight against Germans. So having a German's square being taken away from our citizens sixty years ago, it's a personal thing to me. So I'd like to have the city consider its re, you know, its perhaps re-establishment in some, in some manner. When the land was taken from the city in nineteen sixty one, was sold at, at no cost to the, to the Y. Our downtown was a pretty much intact downtown. There were buildings everywhere that, that, they needed two thirds of a block. That land, about the only place they could find it was there at that park. A lot of bums were hanging out there at Washington Square. One third of that block would be reserved still for some remnants of a square. So they said, all right, we've got a third of the block for Washington Square. We still get your square, but we're giving two thirds of it to the Y. Um, so the, the Y didn't take it at market rate, they, they were given it. Fine, I mean, they were good, good stewards of it. But then, uh, roughly twenty years later, at that point, after nineteen, early eighties, I have ten seconds, our downtown cratered. So, uh, um, the rest of the block was given. So, um, ten dollars and fifty one cents has been established.
Thank you, Mr. Handel.
At Urban Two Ten for the value of downtown Y, uh, four hundred thousand dollars. And I'll send you more information.
Thank you, Mr. Handel.
Thanks so much.
Anyone else?
Um, my name is Ebony Scott. I'm a twenty seven year old veteran, I live on thirty seven oh six Esplanade Avenue. I don't know what ward that is because I just moved there recently. And I've been having a lot going on with everything happening. I had big dreams and I had things to, to approach those dreams with fashionably. But because of recent events, I'm no longer in the position I used to be. I don't have a place. I've been staying with somebody else and she was kind enough to let me do that. And now we both have to go. I don't want to turn to, I've been calling people. We've both been calling people, we've applied to apartments. I have bad things on my credit. They want proof before I'm done. And I don't know what to do. I'm tired of going backwards. I feel like, I feel like I'm getting left behind. Feel like I'm not growing. I feel like the rug keeps getting pulled from beneath me. I'm trying to work things out. I was just in Texas, you know, lining things up with the VA. I took, uh, you know, a big chance coming out here to Iowa for something that really meant something to me. And I, you know, I was doing fine. But after doing fine for a while and having to arrange, rearrange things that were going on in my daily life to try and get other things done that really weren't my initial priorities, I've lost time. I've lost money. I've lost bonds and I'm gonna lose more. I'm tired of losing. I lost time and that time was not easy time. It wasn't easy serve, so I didn't, I didn't serve as long as I could. But I earned some things and I lost those things I earned with the recent events. I don't have my name on a lease, but I have roof over my head. I do until the thirty first, I believe. And I still haven't found where I'm gonna go next. I'm actually looking at moving to Virginia. That wasn't part of the plan with one of my old Navy buddies because that's the only person I can turn to in this type of moment. And the person I was living with, I haven't known her that long, but she may be going with me because I can't turn my back on her. And she helped me the way she did. But we both need help right now. We can't even lean on each other because we don't have it. Um, I don't wanna go back to my mama's house. Yeah, I hadn't been to the Navy, I've worked at a prison. I've, I've done quite a few things and it seems like every transition is a backwards transition to me. I went from the military to a prison, to Walmart, to, uh, to Iowa, to, to McDonald's, to, I've been doing a lot. I can't keep up transportation to make it to my jobs on time. Ubers are very scarce, I don't know if they're scared of Corona or what, but Uber drivers ain't taking rides like they used to. Lifts aren't coming through. I, I got a lot going on. I'm still trying to handle small stuff, you know what I'm saying? And on top of that, I got a big heart, so I find myself tied up in other people's situations. And I got a lot of emotional things going on. And I really hope somebody understands enough to do something, anything. I don't care if it's, I, I, I was hearing something about HUD, something for some, some military stuff for, for veterans. I don't know, but if I could get a more direct number, because the places I've been calling haven't really been helping me like I was expecting. Things aren't, aren't as fail proof as I expected them to be after my, after my service. I thought I'd have more protection when it came to things like this. And it's, it's a deep situation for me. I'm a very happy person, but this, this anguish I feel is just as great as the passion I normally feel for my country and for the people around me. I don't know what to do next, you know? I need something. Thank y'all.
Thank you, anyone else?
Hello, yes, my name is Gloria Presley. Um, I moved here nine years to the date. I love this city, this is the first time, and at sixty six, left home. Uh, I really love the city, how the living standard is, where I come from. And the people that you talk to, it's not a racial, it doesn't show no racial barrier, anything. All I'm worried about is the kids being safe. You know what I'm saying? We can't do anything if we living on a fixed income or low income or what. These people here that I, I, this last past year, well, I've been looking for, to buy a home. But I had a home, could have had a home when I first got here. And I end up trying to be righteous, do the right thing and put it on the back burner for something other else than let it went before I could buy it. But I love this city, from where I come from. All I'm asking for is some help to get us settled and to make sure our kids are safe as any family. But I do love Davenport, this is the first time in my life I, I could say I left home. My mom passed, I took care of her for two and a half years. And all I wanted is to make sure the kids is not left out. Cause I'm, I'm, I guess I'm a mama's baby. And I know what's right and what to do, you know, and just, kids have to be safe, kids have to have a home. And that's all I'm asking for help for today. Even myself, I went through a couple of issues with relatives here. Even if your rent is paid, your utility is paid. Just because you know your next door neighbor, I've talked to agency here in this building about it, uh, for discrimination. I, I had a lawsuit, I dropped it because he said he wouldn't put no penalty on me or, or put nothing bad on my background check. And although it still comes up, like I was evicted or whatever, but I was there. I moved in on the third of the year and I moved out on the third of the year. This year I haven't even been able to qualify even for the, uh, rent, the rent rebate because I had to, I gave it up, I didn't renew my lease. It's just stuff like this that's going on here. There's a lot of people that trying to make it, but they, they doing things the wrong way. And all I'm concerned is about our kids, my, our kids, anybody's kids here. This is a beautiful place to raise a family. Uh, on top of everything, of how the level of balance is on different things. You know what I'm saying? And I love it here and that's all I'm asking for some help from the city to at least re, replace us somewhere in a home for a, a period of time where we could handle it. Because fixed income, that's really no money. I can't get my husband's pension and he's been gone now over, huh, fifteen years because you have to go through the military to even get his pension retirement. So I'm living, and they won't give me my money I earned as a worker of, of where I come from. Or, you know, I'm from the United States, but, uh, as I'm saying, in other words, please have a heart to don't abandon us. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Darren Hopping, I'm from Thirty Fifth Street, Seventh Ward. We're here just to say we need help. We, we don't wanna look like a charity case that, you know, but it's hard. You're looking at rent, seven, nine hundred thousand dollars. You gotta pay first month's rent, you gotta pay deposit, moving cost. A lot of us don't have it and it's hard. We don't know, everybody don't know where they're gonna go. You know, my place got mold in the windows. The downstairs where the water shut off, the last landlords, they come to try to fix it because it was leaking water, they broke the handle and they put silicone around it. They didn't even know where the shut off valve was for the outside to fix it. Um, but I just think, you know, give it in your hearts, guys, to help us out and not let this stuff happen again to other people. And that, I mean, that's all I got, just think about helping us out. And we're not a charity case, but we, we, we do need a little bit of help here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Sylvia Abby. I'm from Crestwood Apartments. This is a lot. Um, we received a letter from the city saying repair or vacate by August first. Um, we all knew there was no way to repair the things that need to be repaired out there because it's a lot. They came by a year ago, um, and asked for the same thing to be, everything to be repaired, which nothing got repaired besides the windows. Nothing else was repaired the correct way. Um, I'm asking for our apartment to at least try to get some extended stay, to try to find something in thirty days. I'm dealing with a disabled mom that I take care of, my kids, my little sister, and it is unbearable. I'm doing it alone. Yes, I have family that are, is telling me, try here, look here, call here, call there. But actually doing everything, calling everyone, I'm doing it alone. I'm calling landlords. They're not calling back. I'm texting, not texting back. So it's like, if we can just, if I can get some help, just with a little extended stay to at least try to find something. It's hard. Even they're like, try the hotels. Okay, the money that we would use to stay in the hotel, we could save to try to find a place. The application fees are ridiculous. It, it's, it's unbearable. You're charging me twenty, thirty and forty dollars to give you my information. I gotta do all the paperwork and I'm not even guaranteed to get the place. So I went and applied today at, um, a place where literally all morning. That's how thick the application was. Paid the forty dollar application fee for thirty minutes later for her to call and say it was denied because of the credit. So all I'm asking is if Crestwood Apartment can at least get extended stay to at least try to find somewhere for us to go. We can't go to family members' house because they have kids. They, you know, don't have the room and board to take everyone in. So, um, I've been online, I've been applying and like the rent is ridiculous. Like they're wanting six fifty for one bedroom, nine seventy five for, um, a two bedroom. And like that's what is available at the moment. Like we're on a fixed income, I'm against our security. I work, but through DHS, but it's, it's not nothing to get us where, hey, um, I have the funds right now, can we move in? Even with saving, it's going to, we're gonna have to save for a while to be able to pay, you know, the nine fifty rent, the nine fifty deposit. You know, if we can get some kind of help on, like I said, the extended stay, trying to help us find a place, a livable place. We don't wanna go into this again where we think we're comfortable, we think we can call the landlord, they're gonna come and fix things and tomorrow, hey, tomorrow someone's gonna come. Oh, hey, did they fix that? No, oh, someone's gonna come and fix it and then it, it never gets done. Not just our apartment, just any apartment. Like there is so many apartments out there that my niece had to move twice in one month. One was leaking, the inside was leaking. He told her, hey, I'm gonna move you to the next apartment. Moved her to the next apartment, her refrigerator doesn't work, her stove doesn't work. He's taking it from the abandoned apartments and putting it in her apartments. The water, you can't, she can't take a shower. She's literally gotta get in, wash up and get out because the water just builds up and, and doesn't flow right. But thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Hello, my name is Paula Kelly and I live on thirty seven oh six Esplanade Apartment Two. Okay, me, I don't have a savings account, I spend money from day to day. So me going to work, getting up every day, living paycheck to paycheck, and then I get this notice on my door. I'm flat on my, I'm flat on the streets because I'm living from paycheck to paycheck. I don't got no money saved up from him putting this notice on my door saying, I still gotta pay the five hundred dollars rent, but I still gotta get out at the end of the month. This application fee, three hundred and fifty dollars for them to call me back and tell me my credit ain't good enough to get it. I got an eviction on my background prior to this. So I had got help getting that apartment anyway. So I knew it would have been hard for me to get another apartment. So this is very inconvenient. I had to quit my job to try to save up money in order to get another apartment. Yeah, I just gotta relocate and try to find something else and try to get some help. I mean, it ain't always bad to ask for help. People think if you ask for help, you poor or you something, but sometimes you need help. And this time I need help, well, I'm gonna be helpless. That's all I can say.
Thank you, anyone else?
Everybody, uh, my name is Darryl Brown and, uh, I think I'm in Seventh Ward.
Where at, sir? It's hard to hear, sorry.
Tom, uh, Tom Lake, am I right?
I don't know, I can't hear.
I'm sorry, Tom. Crestwood, I'm sorry. And I've been here for ten years, uh, uh, just me and my two sons, uh, and I don't know my way around here. You know, I'm, like I said, I've been here ten years, I still don't know my way around because like, I don't really go out much. I'll be at home basically raising my two kids. And I got this letter on the door. Uh, it's, it'll be eleven months, um, I don't know, I wish that I paid, you know? And okay, we gotta get out, but where we gonna go? You know, it's like, uh, maybe forty or fifty families that's over in Crestwood. You know, there's little kids there, you know, it's a lot of little kids, it's a lot of elderly. And there's a lot of, you know, people with, um, disability also that probably can't even move stuff. All, you know, it's getting emptier, emptier, emptier. But like, where's, where's the families going? I raised my kids for ten years straight without no state. Um, I was getting disability and, um, I don't get food stamps, so. I don't get food stamps, so it's hard to do, take care of the rent, water, gas, all that. Plus my equity, which everybody else has equity too, that's David, um, last month's rent. You know, um, we don't even get that. Like, if we paid it, we should get it back to at least in our pockets so we can do what we gotta do. That's, that'll lower you guys' budget as well because that's money they owe to us, you know? We may not even ever get that. Honestly, I don't want to take my kids to no motel because that's not how we live. That's not how I live. And so, you know, all the kids are like, wow, what are we gonna do? And I see it like every day. And, um, you know, I can find, I got a place right now already, you know? All we need to do is figure out where we're gonna get this extra money and we can move right in. But I don't know about everybody else, you know? Um, I'm more worried about the little kids also, like where the, where everybody else is gonna be able to go. Because, uh, there's not that many hotels for all the people either, you know? So, um, we need, we need to figure something out because like, it's not that much time for us to, like I said, there's a lot of families over there. Um, I don't even know which way to go. So I just, I hope for the best and that's how I've been doing it. I mean, I see daily how hard it is to live here in Davenport, especially when you're used to living like you're supposed to, but then when you get hit with something like that, that's another, something that you gotta build on. A lot of people can't, you know what I'm saying? Because there's no money. And, um, I'm, I'm trying to raise my kids right. Um, it's good that, not that this happened so I can, because today was the first time I bring my youngest son in to actually see something like this. Like, he was fascinated. I thought that was cool. But, um, he talks to me, he's like, well, we gonna do that? And like, I really don't know what to tell him. Like, I got a little money raised up, let me save aside, you know? But I think I'm probably like, uh, $2,700 short. You know, probably $500 to my name the rest of the month, you know? And so, and like I said, I already have, um, a home where we can purchase it. We just, the landlord, if, if they give it to me, he says, give me something that's written down that's saying that these people are gonna help and you can move in. And like, I'm blessed because the landlord said, okay, if you can have it right and saying that, you know, saying the cities, uh, people, whoever is in, you know, can help you, help you, then we'll move right in. But everybody ain't got that. And this, from here to Bettendorf, out of all those families. Man, that's gonna be kinda hard because it took me almost five months to get the place that I'm landing on. So, you know, I'm just, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm worrying about the kids, you know, I mean, you know, it's, that's it. I mean, you guys need to do what, everybody needs to work together, do what they gotta do for these babies, you know? Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, um, my name is Teresa Zabledel and I have a few concerns, but it sounds like they will have a meeting at Crestwood with Salvation Army and Legal Health is what one person was talking about tomorrow evening.
Are, are you from Crestwood, ma'am?
No, but that's what the guy in the red shirt was speaking about, so maybe he could.
If you could give your owner address, that'd be helpful.
Um, I'm on Cheyenne. And then I have some information for the female veteran that I wanted to speak with after, afterwards, but, um, that might help her. But I'm here for a different matter because, well, it's, it's not as big of a matter, but I'm still, haven't seen any replacement of the trees that have been down during directo. And there's been a lot on the pathway and they need to plant more. It would be helpful if they planted more seed-bearing trees, oaks and oak and different plant, um, things like that. And since you said you were giving out your phone number on the news, I haven't received that yet. I called City Hall. And you said you would give out your personal cell phone. So, thank you. And, um, I also had talked with Lieutenant Pearl and Internal Affairs regarding a certain matter. And I have not received a phone call back yet, so I would like to have hope, you know, talking with Police Chief Sikorski that we could work together on the matter with a, with a certain matter that, um, it's conduct for policemen, police persons, I should say. And, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll, I'll be brief, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, good evening. My name is Ken Crokin. I live at 29 Hillcrest Avenue, which is the 6th Ward. Uh, I'm here tonight on behalf of your Quad City River Bandits. Um, I want you to be aware and I would like the public to be aware that, uh, we are offering yet another, uh, COVID vaccination clinic this Saturday, the 17th, from, uh, 10 to noon. Um, uh, I do believe that I would happily put the Bandits' record for, uh, responsible corporate citizenship against, uh, any company in the area. But we, we are deeply committed to this for a number of reasons, um, much of which has already been addressed by Alderwoman Lee. Um, not to put too fine a point on our vaccination rates, which are hovering slightly above 40. That's 20 percentage points less than Johnson County. It's 10 points less than the state average. Um, our, our failure to, as a community, to embrace the vaccine and build the level of herd immunity that we need, uh, has created something of a sitting duck for Scott County uh, going forward as the Delta variant now accounts for more than half of all new cases in the state. Viruses go where they can spread. And, uh, so far, we've been quite lucky in the sense that, uh, all of the variants we've seen to date uh, are, um, uh, can be managed by our current battery of vaccines. There's no guarantee that will continue. The next variant may be able to spread through, uh, the entire population irrespective of vaccination or not. And, uh, could set us right back where we were in, in March of, uh, 2020. So, um, uh, what we are doing is we are providing free Ferris wheel rides to anybody who shows up on Saturday morning to get their vaccine. I'm going to ask, uh, all of you to please encourage your constituents uh, to turn out and bring all their unvaccinated friends for, uh, a fun time. Uh, I'll also just briefly report that, uh, the Bandits are the winningest team in professional baseball. Uh, we are far and away, uh, leading our league. So, uh, I believe we are doing a very good job in providing the quality of family entertainment this community uh, wants and deserves. But I also want you to know, and I'll be back with greater detail, that since our home opener on, uh, May 11th, we've had a total attendance of 65,000 people. That's resulted in a payment of, uh, $35,000 in sales tax. It is directly responsible for 500, uh, hotel nights, uh, 1,500 meals and a whole lot of, uh, economic impact that, uh, I think will, I hope, make you feel better about your investment uh, in the stadium and in your team. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Terry Bush. I live on Thorntonwood Avenue. I'm in the 3rd Ward. I want to address the council again about the issue of fireworks. Uh, this fireworks thing is, this fireworks ordinance has been violated every day. You know, my dog won't go out. Uh, I gotta pick up all the junk in my yard, the fireworks debris. The last fireworks I heard was July 9th, Friday, you know? So, I mean, there's, this is totally being ignored and I don't really see how this ordinance can be enforced. You got so much of this going on, fireworks at 2:00 in the morning, the police can't possibly answer all the calls. You know, in fact, uh, another thing I want to bring up is that, uh, Quad City Times, uh, contacted all the Quad City cities. Wonder how many, uh, calls they had, complaints about fireworks, and apparently Davenport doesn't want to tell them that. They told them, uh, the way I understand it, told them, you want to know that number, file the Freedom of Information, so. I can't, you know, we talk about government transparency and they can't tell them how many calls you get about fireworks. You can't tell how many citations they hand out for violations. I know in one of the cities they had 165 calls, something like that, and they hand out one, one citation. And the, the reason why they do that is they say, well, I can't prove that Terry Bush lit that fireworks, you know? So I can't give them a ticket. It's unenforceable. So my, my point is, the city has the ability to stop this. They can stop the discharge of fireworks in this city. And I want the council to take action, at least to vote on that. You know, if you guys put it up for a vote, then I can see what council members are for that or against that, you know? And, uh, so anyway, it's, uh, it's this, this fireworks thing. We got people injured. You know, the hospitals talked about how many fireworks-related injuries they treated at the emergency room. So anyway, it's totally out of hand. I would like to, I don't know how the council can get a motion before the council to vote on this. I don't know how you do that, you know? Uh, but, uh, I would like to, maybe I need to go to my 3rd Ward meeting and talk to my elder woman and maybe she can explain to me how I could do that. So anyway, again, I'm opposed to the fireworks. I think there's a lot of people opposed to the fireworks. The people that are crazy about this stuff are really imposing on our, uh, what do you call it? Noise ordinance or littering noise, you know, it's, uh, I know I go to the stock car races and they say, oh, we can't run past 10:30 because there's noise ordinance. Well, they're shooting fireworks at 2:00 in the morning, you know? So anyway, uh, again, I'd like to, uh, probably go to my 3rd Ward meeting and see what I need to do to, uh, maybe bring this before the council for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm John DeTay. I'm, um, Bettendorf resident, but grew up in, was raised and grew up in Davenport. Um, first I want to congratulate the city on, um, bringing Amazon to our community. Members of this council and members of the team probably were in negotiations with one of the richest persons on this planet. And there was, um, a lot of expertise, a lot of, um, political wrangling, I'm sure. And, and you got the best deal that you could for the residents of Davenport. So we thank you for that. Um, all we're asking for is to bring that same expertise and energy and positive, um, goodwill, um, to the situation that we're, we're facing, um, on 35th Street in Crestwood. The framework of what's happening right now, um, you can find in three reports. The Regional Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing, 2019. The Tri-City Housing Assessment, page 99. And, um, the Silos to Solutions, um, um, work that the Quad City Housing Cluster did. There's the data, the recommendations and, and a plan. That's all there. And I want to speak to page 99 in particular because on that, page 99, it talked about the need for more inspections, that we needed to hold landlords and owners accountable for the dismal conditions that they're allowing their residents to live in and still demand rent. And that's a good thing. But what page 99 predicted is if you have enhanced inspections, like enhanced law enforcement, you're going to have displacement or incarceration. And, and we're gonna have lots of displacement if we don't have the, just any kind of remnant of a plan that, that page 99 talks about. It's a, it talks about proactively getting the city inspectors to, um, talk with the people in the community economic development, who are talking with the developers, who are talking with the owners, who are talking with the property management companies. And if you are about to sell your property and you're letting your property go because you want to sell it to a bad actor like Chris Salazar, then we want to do something about that. And maybe it's not more than a 30-month notice. Maybe it's a six-month notice. We'll give you your property. You have the, you have the constitutional right to do whatever you want to do with your private property, even if it's gentrification. You have that right. But as a city, we have a responsibility and obligation to look out for all of our residents, all of our residents. And right now, we're not doing that. So page 99, please read it. It's there. It, the, 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 the data is in the Regional Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing, 2019. The 2020, 2020, um, Tri-City Housing Assessment. And the Quad City Housing Cluster did a two-year study called Silos to Solutions that talks about all of this and it's there. There's $41 million in your, in your emergency, your, your APRA fund. Not one penny is going to home renters that are 50% AMI or below. It's all about homeownership. And Mayor, I congratulate you on the Youth Assessment Center. And I know Ken Crokin has taken a strong, um, position on the 40-bed detention center. But if we're talking about kids and we're talking about gun violence and we're talking about, you know, the alternative to kids living in their own homes or, you know, doing an assessment on all this stuff that we're talking about tonight. And then if they fail that assessment, like people are failing their, um, applications, we'll find a place for you in a big old detention center. That would be the biggest in the, in the state of Iowa. We can do better. If we brought Amazon here, we can fix this problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Second, all in favor of adjournment? Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.